I would like to call to order the June 14th meeting of the Alamo's planning commission and acknowledge that the press and public is duty duly notified in accordance with state law. That first item on the agenda is the approval of several issues of minutes. Any motions or comments at this time?
I move, we approve as written, the May 27th, June 8th, and June 15th, 2021 minutes.
Second, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. New business. Douglas, you want to take it from there? I'll let you go. You're off camera maybe.
Alright, so as you all are aware by now, the, at the last council meeting, council requested that the planning commission look into issues stemming from short-term rentals and dealing with short-term rentals. It was my impression of the, and I think I forwarded the, the video to you so you could get your own impressions, but it was my impression of that meeting that they wanted for the commission to specifically consider a cap. That's a, a cap is a tool that's been being considered and utilized by other communities, and it seems to be getting traction in other communities. So I think they wanted some analysis specifically on the idea of a cap. Having said that, I don't think there was a, there was a huge amount of detail in their tasking of you. So I think if, if that analysis was, analysis was to go to somewhere else, I think that would also be okay.
Douglas, would you, one of the questions I think maybe for us to deal with, this is more of a livability issue for the residents? Does it, does it, do we address the livability? That's what it sounded like on them.
Yes, I would, I would agree with that. So to kind of back up a bit, if there's any other, and we'll, we'll go through kind of ideas of, of how to, how to tackle this here in just a second, but hopefully everybody had a chance to, to look at the video, see what, see what the request was specifically. And I have also forwarded each of you about a year ago, the planning commission wrapped up a review that there was in the year 2019. There was a pretty in-depth review, similar set of circumstances that other communities started considering various other tools to look at short-term rentals. At that time, the city thought it would be wise to look at those tools, look at our current state of affairs. At that time, we met with the police department. We gathered data on the numbers. We looked at, we gathered all of the information from what other communities were doing. Planning commission analyzed that, created a, a series of recommendations that, that really were, I would say, kind of more geared towards just enforcement tools for the, for the police department to deal with these things as they come up. But that set of recommendations went through the process with city council and was, was ultimately approved. So some of this, you know, kind of groundwork and, and analysis has been done there. It might be that, Ron, would you have been the, well, and Lisa's not here, but it could be that there was only two of you on the commission at that time. So it would be kind of a good effort just to get all of the membership of the planning commission up to speed on the various issues and, and talk through them. So I think kind of any way you look at it, it's, it's always a good exercise. It's, it puts fresh eyes on the, on the issue. See if new ideas come out, see if differences are happening in the community that warrant new direction. So it's just kind of a, some background. That's, that's what I have. I don't know. I was hoping that at this meeting we would kind of identify a strategy for moving forward. What, what are, kind of identify some goals of what we would like to do. I think we're going to have to make some decisions about how quickly you will want to act. It was my sense because, I mean, there was mention of a moratorium at the council meeting, so they didn't, there was no action on that, but I got the impression that they, that time was of the essence in their mind. So I, I don't think that they're anticipating kind of a long drawn out review or analysis. So in my impression, time is a bit of the essence. So you will also happen to have a lot of other things on your plate at the time. So we may want to talk about special meetings or, or how we want to basically schedule getting to whatever our goal is. And then also I was hoping that we could identify useful bits of information to pull out. You know, I think we've, hopefully people have had a chance to think about what would be useful to you all as planning commissioners to have. You know, what, what data points, what information, what other ordinances, anything that you can think of that, that we could get to you to help you make a good, well-informed recommendation back to city council. You, um.
Comments?
You want to get to comments? You want to, why don't, why don't we do this?
A pregnant pause.
Why, why don't we, why don't we just kind of have a round of comments? I'd like to go back to those points, kind of framework, what we want to do, timeline and useful bits of information that, that's kind of on my agenda for, for things to pull from you at this meeting. Other than that, I think it would be good for you all to, to just kind of air your ideas, thoughts, concerns, et cetera.
To start, I'll, I'll let myself. A lot of the conversation from the council meeting seemed to focus too on rental licenses, which is an easier target. If we have 800 rental licenses, then you know, you could put a moratorium on that. But is that really the gauge of occupation or occupancy? Some people may have a rental license and rent their house six times a year. Somebody else might be doing it more professionally and renting it out for 40 weeks out of the year. So is there any way that we could gauge times per permit? Or could we look at if we ever were to go to limit a quantity of permits, segregate people that perhaps are renting more full-time to those who are renting more casually. I've known quite a few people that take their however many weeks you're allowed before you lose your, your 4% tax break. That, that's a different class person. I consider that a little bit more casual than somebody who perhaps has the rental beast that they're trying to, you know, rent it every week of the year if they could. You know, there, there are two different groups, classifications almost of, of license. But I think, you know, you might, you might be penalizing the casual renter if you start limiting permits, and you may not necessarily decrease the volume of renting by, on a weekly standard. That, that was what I got out of this. I have no other way. I haven't yet figured out a way to, you know, reduce or quantify it other than maybe stagger the type of license.
Should we take a step back? I think Douglas's suggestion about coming up with a strategy. What, my observation so far is we do not have the data to even determine where we are. That's number one. So we should determine what metrics we're going to need in order to determine, one, where we are. Number two, we don't have any forward-looking metrics or indicators to tell us where we're going. So, and, and we don't have a target. There's no target. There's no indicators and there are indicators and there's no current data to tell us where we are. We should probably focus on those items and how we get to those before we can make any corrections. Because I, I sense from the city council that the trains sort of left the station and we're, we're way over, you know, the livability is being impacted. Residents are talking about it. And how do we, how do we address that? Whether it's cap or moratorium until we can figure it out? I don't have the answer, but I think that until we get those three categories flushed out in full, I think we would just be guessing.
So Scott, kind of set the table there. And what, what you said, Douglas, a few things struck me. You said time is of the essence. And it's a special meeting. So I'll just throw it out there for starters. Is this something we would want to, or with the hope or expectation be for us to come to some sort of determination at the next regular meeting? And then process the data in the meantime, between now and then through special meetings? Or do we have a little bit of an extended timeline?
I, you know, I don't know that I can say what the expected deliverable is from this group. I think a month, to me, it would be pretty monumental to try to get it done in a month.
Okay, good.
So I, I guess in my mind, I was thinking a couple of months.
Okay.
Maybe two, maybe three months.
Just when you said special meeting, that's, it came to mind.
Well, we should have a target. If we beat it, within two months, we probably ought to be able to gather that data, process it.
Yeah. Yeah. And I, you know, I guess in saying that, part of me is wondering if, if, I guess, first of all, if if you also kind of feel a sense of urgency, or if you don't feel a sense of urgency, or if you feel like it's such a kind of, you know, ball of yarn to unwind, that we do want to kind of preemptively suggest a moratorium. That would be, I guess, the other alternative. Either, you know, we, we act with haste and get it done, I would say, in two, three months. Give a recommendation, or if we kind of start getting into this, say, hey, it's, you know, last time it did take a year. You know, we're looking at a year-long process. I think, and again, this is kind of me reading the tea leaves. I, I would think that if the commission felt like it was going to be a year-long process, I think it would be probably wise to send that, send that forward to council and, and let them decide, you know, whether or not to implement any kind of moratorium on issuing licenses.
Douglas, could we evaluate that at each meeting? Just even have, just bring the top, raise the topic if we're prepared to make a recommendation on a moratorium? We do it, or not, we can, can down another.
Yeah.
That way, that way we can gauge our progress over the next couple of months.
I think that's, I think that's wise.
Is it fair to ask Scott, what, what would be the threshold to warrant a moratorium?
I think that's part of the discussion, Sandy, because we don't know where we are. We don't know where we are in rooms. We don't know where we are in occupancy. We don't know where we are on. We got advertised rooms versus what's on the property records. Those vary considerably. We've got advertised guests, you know, all, all of these data points are now becoming available to us. And with the tools that are available today, they're very easy to, to use, manipulate, graph, put on a map, whatever. We can, we can get to those answers quickly, but until we know where we are and see what the queue is, I, I don't know what the answer is. But I think the feeling right now is that the residents are, are static and that the investors have come to town and are buying up blocks or want to buy up blocks and are taking the acceleration of short-term rentals to almost a parapolic, you know, state here seriously. You know, the, the residents are now being asked to leave their homes during summer season and be put up elsewhere so that investors can rent their homes. That's, you know, Polly Beach is looking at a moratorium or a cap. Now Pleasant already, I think, is instituting 1% cap versus about 400 units. If those markets are shut out, where are the investors going to come? They're going to come here. They're already here. So I don't, I don't have the answer. All I'm saying is we gotta, we gotta know where we are and, and get to forward looking to figure out where we're going.
My next question would be of Douglas, would, when does the licensing renewal process end? When would we have the arguably current numbers for the number of licenses?
So it, it just ended 6:30 closed, 6:30, 21, closed down the year. So data that you're getting, you know, and there are some, and there's some kind of preliminary data, that is all pretty much complete data. So, so we do, we do a year-end accounting of what happened for the year. We then start all from scratch. So today, you know, the number of short-term rental licenses on the island is 12, some very low number. That's not, and it's just because they haven't had a chance to be, all be processed with this. So there is a little bit of that that happens throughout the year that they kind of trickle in to an ultimate number. And, you know, we don't know what that number is going to be until June 30th of, at the end of the year.
Are you able to additionally determine how many of them fall out during the year? How many licenses that are active, actually aren't, have been occupied by primary, by families, let's say.
So, so ones that had, that were, that had a license the year prior that do not get a license?
I got, I got a license last year and somebody bought my house and their, and the family moved in it. They're no longer vacation rental, but it still shows as a license, but it's actually.
Yeah, we, we don't know until the year comes that they fail to get a rental license. So, so on kind of availability of information, we're kind of there already. Let's talk about what things I know that we can get. We obviously have the size of, so we have the, the most obvious that we've always had. We've always been able to analyze. We have the number of rent, short-term rental license. That's a, that's a number that we've had. It's been delivered, it's been delivered in your packet over.
And does that include the 72-day ones?
They, no, they are in a different licensing category.
So they don't, they don't, they do require a license?
They require a license, but they're not in the short term. If, and there's a disclaimer in that data whereby they were, they were in the very first years of the data, they were in that count, and then council changed the way they're licensed. So we were able to, to.
You, you have that data. It's just not in the numbers.
That's correct.
Should we, should, since 72 days that they're going to rent are likely going to be at peak season perhaps?
Now, so, so maybe I'm misunderstanding your question. If, if they are by our ordinance, if they lease for a term of less than 90 days, that is classified as a short-term rental and it's in that number. If you sign a four-month lease, it's not in this number. If, if you never sign a lease, it's less than 90 days, you're not in this. So that's, so long-term, you know, an annual lease, that also gets a license, but it's not in here.
Yeah, maybe I wasn't clear. I, I thought that there was an exemption that you rent your home 72 days or less.
That is a tax exemption. So those properties.
Still require.
Yes, they, they have short-term rental license.
They're on Douglas's chart.
Yeah.
Outside wild dooms and inside wild dooms, the 4% properties.
Yeah, 4% with a rental license property is that good.
My question kind of went back to yours is, I don't know if we, the rental license from the last year can be broken down, renewals versus, so it kind of came to your question of, you know, the house changes hands through the year, through the past year. Did they keep, keep a rental license? They apply for a new rental license or did they drop a rental license? I don't know if you, if that can be determined.
It, it can. I mean, we, we, we have the, the licenses each year. I can't think of how to, how that would be presented in a usable, you know, this, this is the ultimate number. This number came out.
I guess the time it did not get renewed and how many new ones?
Each year.
Each year.
Should, should we get back to what, what kind of data do we, where, where do we want to go and what data do we?
Yeah, and I think, I think that's, that's part of the. To me, a moratorium or a cap, I, I don't see how anything we're going to do in the next 30 or 60 days in collecting existing data is going to other show us than, than what we have now. It's not going to show us, is that the level we want to be at? Is that the level we should cap at? Should be higher? Should we lower? So I look at a moratorium or a cap as we want to freeze where we are right now while we figure this out. That's not going to be figured out in the next 30 or 60 days with the data that we have right now. Cause all we have is the number of the bedrooms, the number of short-term licenses. We don't have occupancy data. We don't have a lot of other things. So we don't know the true volume of short-term vacation rentals coming to the island. And if, and if the, the, the general public on the island and council is saying, what we have right now is we don't want it to get worse, then, then we need to freeze at this level where we figure out where we are and, and how we measure that. If we're not willing to do that, I don't think we're going to develop any new data in the next 30 or 60 days. It's going to say, okay, here's an acceptable number. That's my concern.
I, you know, and he.
Hypothetically, the, you know, the myth of the one-third, one-third, one-third.
Forget that.
No, I, I'm, but that, that's been relied upon very heavily.
Right.
In the Isle of Poms. And I think that we're, even in our early comprehensive plan work, we've shattered that. You know, we said that, that's, you know, that's not a meaningful, necessarily comparison. It may, it may have felt good, but the, there were no real impacts or urgency or sense of, you know, being overrun in the communities. So nobody really addressed it. We do have enough data, I think, to be able to say that they, if we did it based on rooms or we did it based on advertised occupancy for those rooms, that we're going to be able to come up with a metric that says, you know, you, you thought it, we thought it was one-third, one-third, one-third. Well, it's probably going to be over 50% short-term rental occupancy or more. We saw that, you know, from one of the residents here, a, a 10%, you saw, I mean, if that, one-third occupancy could represent 70% of the people in the street. And so we'll, we'll have enough data to be able to gauge that. And I think that when people see that that's where we are and, and then we can have housing charts in the queue, we can start doing a little forward looking. I'm not sure it's going to be overly complicated to tell people that we've got a problem.
So.
Well, that, that's assuming that we acknowledge what we have now is a problem.
Exactly. Right. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
It's a problem in the summer. It's a different problem in the winter when you have no neighbors.
I'm somewhat agreeing with all the things you just said, but.
Except for the profit.
Well, I, I wouldn't put that label on it. But again, I don't see any data we're going to get in the next 30, 60 days that's really going to show that level of occupancy other than gut feel or other things saying, well, I live on a street with 10 houses and they're full all the time. So therefore there's 500 people on my street and there's only 10 of us that live there. That's not real data. That's, that's made up data. That's emotional data.
We do have advertised occupancy. So a home that says that they've.
And how often is rented?
During the season, we know it's rented.
So that.
Do we know that?
So, so you're hitting on the whole that I see in our data. We know how big a house is. We know if they have a license or not. I don't know of any way that we get to how many people are actually in there, how frequently.
For, right, two times bedroom plus two. So they can get that many, but we don't know how many people actually rent and stay there during the season.
That's exactly right. I don't think it's, I don't know. Is it out there?
I can absolutely share what I have with our properties. And I've already looked at that. And we're trending lower than 2019 and of course, higher than 2020, but.
But do you get how many people are actually in each house each time?
All I get is it rented from Thursday to Sunday for the occupancy. And if you extrapolate the worst case, then you're probably going to come up with Scott's summation that we have a problem, but that's not the reality.
So you're, so I guess you're saying the best we could do is get a percentage occupancy and multiple, assume that it's, and it's 100% occupancy.
In terms of heads and beds?
Yeah, for the, for the properties he has insight into. He can tell you when they're occupied or not. That's, that's.
I think we can get.
Do you know what, 80% market share roughly or managing or? You probably would like to care to discuss a lot.
No, I, I've got no bones. I, we have 300 properties. I think Beachside has somewhere near 170. Mel Miles with exclusives is 25, 26. Yeah, we track all that. That's what you're doing.
I think you, I think your information would be very valuable.
Yeah, but until we plug that piece in, I don't think we can close all the gap and say, I, I don't think we can base a moratorium on that, on, on just soft information. If, if we're not happy with the way it is right now, then issue a moratorium and say, while we figure it out, we're issuing a moratorium. But to bait, to issue one based on facts, I think we're more than 30 or 60 days away from getting all the facts. That's just my thoughts.
But I, I think I'm hearing Sandy say that they just don't, nobody has how many people are actually in a house.
That's what I'm saying. So we're never going to get 60 days away. Cause I don't know where you can get that from.
But we will know. Okay. So we did, what we can, you know bedrooms, correct?
We know bedrooms.
No bedrooms.
So we can at least do some metrics on, on bedrooms. We can do that.
Correct. Absolutely.
For the one-third, 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 and what's been growing and growing and what categories those are in. We can do licenses.
We can map the properties.
Yes.
Do you have a map from 18 months ago that had, at that time, the current list from 2018 of licenses?
Absolutely.
That's not a big deal.
Well, we can compare it to what was the number from 2018. That was generated early 2019, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
18 months ago, it was presented basically.
Then also I think you need to, is it, is it a seat? Well, is it a seasonal thing? You know, we're always, we're also making the assumption that every room, every home is maxed out for capacity, but we're also assuming they're only being rented in the summertime. So numbers could be skewed if for some reason a home was not rented during a summer, but was rented heavily in and off or shoulder season for in and outs. You know, it, what is the right number? So putting, putting a closet moratorium, you know, might help for summer, might really do something negative in the off-season or have no, or be unnecessary.
This is, this is more the anecdotal gut check. Do you, you all sense that, I've, we've lived in a couple of resort communities that have already gotten, kind of seen it happen before. What happens is the shoulder seasons disappear. So, you know, we got here 10 years ago. There was a long shoulder season. They had a very, we had a very, you know, concentrated peak between Memorial Day and Labor Day. Now it is March and April to September, October. And with the popularity of the migration here, you know, 850,000 people to going to a million across the way, and with the investors being attracted. You know, I, I would venture an educated guess, I hope, that those shoulder seasons, because we are a popular, very attractive place to be migrating to, if the shoulder seasons are going to continue to diminish and the, and the peak season, seeing those are advertised higher than what's on tax records. And therefore, and there are, in many cases, the feeling, Sandy, I would say, or it's, you know, beyond what they, in some cases, beyond advertised occupancy. Not just, you know, great people and everything, but what we're seeing is that, you know, the residents as a percentage of the population on the streets is clearly a, a few for the many. And that's the business that we're in. We're, we're close proximity downtown. We did, we did that when we bought. So it's not, it's not an unexpected occurrence. But, you know, the question I guess I have is when the residential population here is pretty static. You know, we've had 4,300 people for a long time. In the last decade, we've actually had dips. Even in the comprehensive plan, we've seen these STRs and all growing like 26% over that same period or what have you. So the STRs are continuing to grow, whereas the, or second homes, whereas the residential has, and the population here is pretty static.
Yeah, I don't see the short-term rentals growing. I do see the second home population increasing.
The sizes are even, again, at the end of our street, we probably had an addition of, I would say, 20 hospitality.
Oh yeah, easily on my street too. I mean, if we're talking about just things that we're seeing with our own eyes, I mean, there's been three popped up over the past year.
David was talking today. He's got, what, six construction projects around his house right now.
But again, I don't know if there are private rooms or short-term rentals.
I don't know how you track that.
So, you know, it's, it, you're right. We have a problem. I, I don't know. I, I look at it where I live and it's, it's changed dramatically over just the last few years as far as, as far as the mix. My question, I think we're, we're being asked to solve for is when is it enough? Is it enough when I'm the last resident standing on the island? You're the last resident standing on it? I don't know the answer to that, but we're clearly dependent on, I call it the opium of addiction. It's other people's money. And we got to determine when, when we're going to have enough of that and when are the residents going to be completely overrun and, and pushed out of the island.
So from my perspective, the, the challenge, the challenge with all of this to me, and I, and I hear what you're saying, that there is the, is the kind of feeling that the rentals are larger, I think. It's kind of part of the driving force. And I think we can look at, we should be able to look at that. And I know we looked at it prior, but what if all indications are that the number of short-term rentals is actually decreasing or very much flat or not at all increasing, which just by going by the numbers seems to be the case.
Which is why rooms is an important measure. That's why I would suggest we definitely add, add rooms to the metric. Which is why rooms is an important measure. That's why I would suggest we definitely add, add rooms to the metric and also include the hotels.
I agree with that.
But hotel, but how?
An eight, an eight-bedroom or seven-bedroom house is not the same as a three-bedroom J C Longhouse. It's just.
It's, but for short-term rentals, we, do we want to get into hotels?
Well, has created traffic.
Long bumble.
That's.
That, that was my thing is the problem, the, we said livability. So there, there's traffic and there's for lack of better, uh, noise interruptions in the neighborhoods. So if, what are we trying, what is the perceived problem? Is it?
That's exactly what I was going to get.
Oh, if it's both of them, and that, you know, is a moratorium, because apparently livability, if trying to do better enforcement of livability has not addressed the problem. Or at least that's what council is pushing back to us. What are the other, what are the alternatives? Is this one of them? Yes. I think that's a question we have to answer. If that's in case what count, what council thinks, and it goes back to what I think you said is, I don't think we can answer that for, you know, whether there's going to be, you know, three or four months from now to really come to give a good answer for that. So if it is perceived as a problem now, then a moratorium until we can look at it and come back and just say, yes, we think capping short-term rentals will or will not alleviate that issue. Um. That's kind of where I'm sitting with, with it. I think the occupant occupancy does affect especially if it's traffic than the, it is, the number of cars coming through is not just, you know, the number of rentals, if, if they're getting bigger. I can't answer that again, but it's one of the things what I think we want to look at. Um, so if you capped on that a hundred license, but we still progress and those are going from three-bedroom houses to six-bedroom houses. Capping the number of license is not going to put a stop to in the increase in the problem.
Right.
And again, this is all, I can't answer any of that. So we looked at some of the data and that's going to take us, I think it's going to take us a while.
So our previous review on the planning commission was identifying, is there a problem? And, and I think we addressed that. Um. Question is, what is the problem? And I think as, as commission, we didn't really address what is, well, we, we might have left it with just noise and stuff like that. We didn't have big, as traffic a problem as we have this, this summer. Um, but I think if, if we were to, to define what our problems are, it would be helped to, helpful in, in, in understanding, you know, how these metrics are, are playing in. What is the problem? Um, you know, the, it was noise complaints for, for years. You know, that was really the only bugaboo people had. Oh, these guys are partying at two in the morning. Well, there hasn't been that much of that apparently going on. No, no one's been shooting up their, their house in, in, in a year or so. Um, but, you know, so that stuff has been resolved. We, we've met with the place. We've got, we've got a program for that. So, you know, what is the new problem? Is it traffic? Is it the fear of, of losing neighborhoodness? And, and then, and if that is it, we got to define what that really means. Um. You know, it's a, it's a reverse gen, well, it's not a reverse gentrification. It's a different form of gentrification. If, if the residents are, are, you know, being muscled out by development and, and whether that's happening or not, I don't know.
I mean, if you're asking me, it's no, it's still noise and traffic.
Yeah.
Just my personal experience. Just one person.
Although it's why we're here.
Yeah.
To have these conversations.
The noise factor has gone away.
Yeah. The strain on our services.
Yeah.
Our, our services have to continue to increase with the increase in volume. So, I mean, it gets back to, you know, the rental next door has seven garbage cans and two recycles, you know, we've got one and one. So, you know, where do you, at, at what point do we have enough stress on, on the system? And I, I think lots of community is a, is a real, it, it's hard to define.
But I think we need to try. Yeah. Uh, but we need to, to define that. And I think our other scapegoat, quite honestly, a couple of years ago was the, the day tripper, the, the, because that was, the impact on the traffic was primarily that. Um, still, you know, a, a, uh, high usage of our resources for, for no return. We don't seem to have any control over that anymore. Um, but, um, you know, I, I think defining, defining what our problems, our concerns are, I think it's important in, in moving forward.
Yeah, I think the day tripper is certainly a contributing factor to this as well.
But apparently not much we have control of anymore.
Oh, I think we do. We, you know, we just need the police to coordinate with Mount Pleasant, the highway patrol, sheriff's department, move this traffic much quicker and more efficiently. I'm very frustrated with that lack of effort.
You know, maybe, maybe another thing we could do is benchmark. I think we look at other communities and when did they receive, when did they get to the point of penetration? Where they'd said, you know, what, what is their mix? You know, instead of us recreating the entire wheel here, we may want to take a look at some other communities up and down. That have put moratoriums on or have caps or talked to Mount Pleasant, why did they pick one percent of four hundred? What's Polly Bees looking at? And then we've got other communities up and down the coast that have more, not only have moratoriums, but look at Sullivan's Island, they were a rental community and they took two decades to work it down to what their current is, is fifty-nine rental properties already or something. I'm not saying we're going there.
And they still have traffic.
And they.
And they, and they depend on our police department because they don't have the income to, to pay.
Yeah.
Wow. It's just the deep.
So it, you know.
They have, they have a what? Seven, uh, police force and we have thirty.
Think it's that.
Yeah.
We don't have thirty either anymore.
Well, as a tier one analysis, you know, we're talking about our goal here of creating, coming up with a cap. And wouldn't it be prudent? Again, as a tier one, certainly open for refinement. Once we get more data, but wouldn't it? Um, be prudent to look at the maximum capacity. When we're talking about maximums here, it sticks with the theme and then.
You're talking about forty-five hundred dwelling units.
Whatever data we can.
There's, you know, forty-five hundred.
Roughly forty-five hundred units and fifteen hundred short-term licenses. Would it, would it be, would it be, um, one idea is we've got a lot of data coming in now. We don't have, we've got a lot more probably than we've ever had before. The tools to be able to work with that data now are pretty advanced and it's pretty easy to work with. You know, should we ask a few special meetings to, you know, get in the weeds, but we got to get in the weeds and look at the quality of the data, look at what we've got to try to determine on that, you know, we are here kind of thing. In the meantime, we can also maybe, uh, keep our list alive to say, hey, what else can we get to give us some headlights as to where we're going? I mean, that's, that's, that's really, we don't have any of that. And then determine what we've got for, um, a target. And what is a reasonable target? And some benchmarking might help us determine that. Yes, ma'am.
I've been asked to ask all of you, um, maybe lean a little bit more towards your microphones, make sure that they're on because the video won't pick you up.
Can you hear me?
I don't know. Is your microphone on? That's the thing. It's more about whether the video can get you.
Everybody, everybody tap your.
Make sure it's on and then, yeah, sit more towards it as you speak just because.
Tap yours, Scott.
I just maybe sit closer to it and be sweet.
You're not on. Uh, you're on.
You have a very, you have a very deep voice and there's probably something about where you sit and everybody else.
But certainly I think if we're, sorry, not to interrupt, but i- if we're, you know, going to be looking at any kind of a limitation or moratorium or anything like that, I think we, we do need to have data to support it.
All right.
I don't think it'd be arbitrary or just.
So. And it would be helpful actually, as, as we discuss these things, things are kind of coming up and if it, as you make a comment, you can think of a point of data that it would be useful to have. If you would mention that, that would be extremely helpful to me. Um, somebody talked about the number of noise complaints, you know, has that, has that increased? We have the numbers from, uh, twenty nineteen. So we can certainly get the new numbers, see if the number of complaints is different. Um, tonnage of debris, somebody talked about dealing, I think, Scott, I know that we have that.
I'm not sure that's why I'm a good idea.
So we can look at that, uh, traffic counts. I, we have them. I don't know how. They lack a little bit of detail and, and it used to be that we had them off both bridges in each direction. I don't think we have to that level anymore, but we can certainly get what we have. Be hard for me to try to know how to break that out, you know, to attribute that to day trip.
I think S C D O T, I remember looking at that recently. I think we got about four million coming over the connector.
But is there any methodology to determine where they're going?
Going.
So I don't know how we can get it. I don't know how useful it'll be. Um. Number of bedrooms. Basically occupancy. I think we can get to a, take our rentals, multiply them by their occupancy, come up with kind of a total load. I, I think we should.
We don't have, we don't have occupancy, but we could have capacity.
Right.
Yes, we would get to maximum capacity. We could, I think we can compare it to, you know, several years ago, maximum capacity, see if that's different. Um. I'm not positive we can go back in time, but I think we can.
We agree that those rooms should include, um, primary residences, second homes, short-term rentals and hotels.
Wait, you're saying.
All of our count, our counts, our data.
So how are we gonna, how are we going to, um, put an occupancy level on someone's home?
Oh, I thought we said we were going to look at, um, I'm not saying for occupancy, for counts of rooms. Room counts.
So what?
We've got, we've got room, we've got data right now from, from the tax.
Yeah.
We've got, those tax records are going to show the tax record, um, room count for all of the properties on.
Right.
Regardless of two or six percent, four percent, whatever. We know what the, we easily define out what the hotel room counts are. Those are easy to find out. So then we have, uh, primary resident, second home, short-term rental, and we have hotel rooms. And we have a total room count on the island and then we classify those into those four buckets. You know, we can, and then what we have is, um, furthermore, um, we may want to look at or test out, um, some of the advertised rooms versus the property record rooms. Because I think the average, I think what we're going to find on short-term rentals is there's a propensity to have advertised more rooms and occupancy than what's in the property records. And that maybe we have to test that out.
Yeah, we, we have always.
I know on our street, just the seven we did, six of them advertised higher than their, their, uh, property records.
So we get focused on occupancy because it, it's not always in our office. So I know that we, we track pretty tightly max occupancy. Because there used to be different ways of figuring it out for the older rentals. It could be, it was either two per bedroom plus two, or it was a person for every two hundred and fifty square feet. So.
What, what I'm suggesting is if we would go out and look at the advertised guests, the home is advertising a, a number of guests. That would be, that would be what the reality of the, at least the, the advertised capacity for that home.
Okay. Um, that.
We're looking at fifty, we're looking at small.
In your database, you, you have the occupants, the permitted occupants.
Yes.
That's what you print out on these papers that they hang on the wall.
That's correct.
So that's in your database.
Yes.
Okay.
It'd be interesting to see how that compares to the others. That's all.
So it's going to be skewed because you've got sleeper sofas and living rooms that will allow two people to sleep in them. So a three-bedroom home in theory can have occupancy of eight people, not six for the three bedrooms.
Right. Like, as Doug said, it used to be two plus two, two for each bedroom plus two. So you can get eight, exactly.
Or you have a bunk room with four children in there. I, I, excuse me, I didn't mean children. Four people occupying, uh, and a sleeper sofa. So would that have, is that a, can you have ten people in a three-bedroom home?
But ultimately, it uses a permit with the number on it.
You're not supposed to, but.
No, no, I understand.
Well, you could.
You don't know that number. I don't know that that's published anywhere right now.
It's on the wall.
Occupancy or permitted occupancy.
Do you have an Excel spreadsheet with that on with every address that has a rental license?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then we can compare that to the number of bedrooms, to Scott's point.
It's not going to be a perfect comparison, but yes.
Yeah, you have to extrapolate some, it'll be close, but yes.
Yeah. And I'm, and all I'm suggesting is that we, if we can, which I don't think would be too hard to take one more leap of data that says you've got your authorized occupancy versus your advertised occupancy. I think we'll find.
I'm sure there are some, but I'm not thinking in terms of, uh, overwhelming numbers. Not, most of us don't want to lose our license, so we're fairly truthful with our numbers.
No, I mean, your three hundred might be.
No, no, I'm saying that for the industry.
We've got a lot of independents on here, probably.
Um, it, is anybody really good with Excel and you can take the county's data and take the, um, licensing Excel spreadsheet and pull it apart so that you can now add the number of bedrooms to the licensed properties?
So Debbie put them together.
Is there?
Debbie put them together, but.
She put the, she didn't put the one that had bedrooms together.
She didn't have.
But if we use the one you sent out this week with your, we would have bedrooms and licenses on the same one. We don't have that right now, but we can get that.
Yeah, I, I'd like to, I think.
Okay. I think that's what you're asking is that we're going to do some sort of data merge and get some separation on.
Set up a data merge.
I don't know how you get the hotels other than to go down a list. There aren't that many.
Right.
And say this one has ten rooms and that one has a hundred rooms.
I still am a little well, different, but, but hotels, we don't allow any new ones. They are what they are. We're not talking about, we weren't tasked with it. We certainly would want it to know for comprehensive plan reasons, but I don't know why it would get into this.
So they get a carve-out?
I, yeah, and we're not, we're not talking.
I think for our metrics, if we ignore the hotel rooms, we're going, we're, we're going to have.
Yeah, I think they're large part of some of our.
That might actually work in the short-term rental's favors because we got to, we got to account for those hotel rooms.
Yeah, there are only one license, but they're.
We got nearly five, we got nearly five hundred hotel rooms.
But if, if.
But what are we, what are we going to do?
I think we're trying to quantify bedroom, rental bedrooms instead of rental units.
Traffic.
This is really hospitality.
Leads to how many cars.
Just to get a more accurate depiction of what.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's good to have, but I don't know that, we're not talking about regulating them in any way. They're already.
But it has to be included in the equation because it is impacting the livability of the island. How, how can we ignore five hundred hotel rooms? I, I mean, I don't know. I asked the commission. I don't, how can we ignore that the impact of that on livability here?
Well, i- if you're limiting, if you were to limit bedrooms as the metric as opposed to homes or permits, it could be in a couple of years, we're out of permits, one becomes available, we've got, we've got an availability for three bedrooms. And somebody wants to put their house in the rental market. You know, hopefully they're, they're, they've only got three bedrooms because that's all they'd be able to rent. Um, you know, that could be the metric or, or an end result of this, i- if you were to, uh, gauge licensure or limitations on, on bedroom numbers as opposed to house numbers. There's one house could get a license if there, if we limited licenses. The next lucky person might have, uh, uh, you know, a two-bedroom house. Somebody else might have, you know, a, a five-bedroom house. So obviously the quantity of people will be different because the bedroom numbers will be different.
So, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know what the downside is of having that data, having it available. And including, and we can always carve it. We can always filter it out or figure out what to do with it. But I think, I think to get an accurate count of total quote hospitality on the island, we cannot ignore the hotel rooms.
I would agree with that. I, I just don't know that you've been tasked with regulating hotel rooms. I'd say, tell that. That's where, good information to have, but not what you're tasked with.
Right.
All right. Go, go, going back to your original question, we're thought, what, what is it we're trying to come out of today with to tell counsel? Because I agree with you. When you, when you listen to what they were saying, they were pretty urgent, so to speak. We, you know, give, give them some, give them some time, but we want to answer quickly. Is our answer to them? You know, we, we need, we need to keep looking at data or collecting data. We've made good progress. Um, we're not going to have an answer for two or three or four months. And if you, if, if, if what have right now is unacceptable, then issue a moratorium now and freeze it at this level. I mean, that, that's, what's our, what are we trying to say?
Yeah, I think that's an excellent question. And I, from my own personal, um, point of vantage point, I have it in my mind that this can be done in two or three months. Is that?
I think we make very good progress in that timeframe.
I think, I think we're going to have all, hopefully we'll have all the data, we'll have the capabilities, we'll be able to summarize and analyze the data. I think, I think we're gonna have all, hopefully we'll have all the data, we'll have the capabilities, we'll be able to summarize and analyze the data and come up with some at least conclusions of what the data is telling us. Easily, I would hope within two months. It may not, and it may be iterative from there, but I think it's that old, you know, we're gonna have 80% of the. Data and the ability to be able to present it and utilize it, analyze it. To make a conclusion, you know, we can spend the next two years doing, getting the extra 20 or 10%.
So at that point, in two months. If we get the data. And it's. Well, or, or if it's so kind of far. We would at least be able to say, hey, it's more than, it's. It's more complex than we anticipated. We now think it's, you know, a year process, and at that point they could make a decision to. So I, I think that's kind of what you're saying, at two or three months, we will at least have. Enough information. To tell whether it's a quick or long process.
Define the issue, and I think we have, in the last even two or three weeks, we've made good progress in getting some good data that we can now start playing with. So I think we can get to that point.
I would agree, I would hope within two months we can define that you are here.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I would, and we've kind of. Reviewed some of it prior to this in terms of. Do we have it all? No, but I think we've got, got a pretty good basis set for. Starting to compare now.
The, the other concern that I would have, especially with the moratorium, if we were to say, suggest one right now and, and do something like limit it to what we've got. You know, I, I know I'm involved with a few designs of homes that may become rentals that may not be right now. You know, what happens to that investor who, who may not be. You know, a big-time investor, he might be somebody who. You know, that did something there, there. Well, yeah.
We cannot.
But, you know, what does it take to get a rental license? Does somebody who has plans in for permit or has a permit but has not had a, doesn't have a. House yet? Is he allowed to get a rental license? What, what is, what's, what's the rule on that?
Gotta have a CO.
Gotta have a CO.
You've got to be through the pipe.
Yep.
For, for clarification, you're using. The word moratorium. Sounds like interspersed with a cap, and a moratorium to me means immediately stop, everything stops.
Yeah.
Brakes are on.
Yeah.
And I don't think there's any justification at this point. I think there's a lot of strong feelings and emotions out there, but I don't. Being in the business and not seeing the numbers and I'm hearing from some people. To warrant a moratorium and to Douglas's point, I think the trend actually is, is backing down. From our highs several years ago, and your chart certainly shows that in terms of the number of licenses, give or take some, some. Video synchroncies, I think you identified, what did you say, 60 in the last year since the new software?
First year was more productive, I think it was. Like 100 or so the first year and this year it's been like 50, 40.
Yeah, and they were.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, my point was that, you know, a cap is something totally different, and it could be that we go through this process. And decide that a cap is warranted to hold down. Uh, the future, and then the devil's in the details for. What does a cap entail if. Concerned about the condominiums, which basically were 90% were built for, 80% were built for vacation rental. How do you manage those? The one-bedroom protocols, the one-bedroom marina walk, the, you know, the two and three-bedroom. Units that are. Could they be livable residents? Some are. But is that, you know, what do you do with those? How do you, how do you carve that out? C-caps, for example.
Got questions.
So anyway, that, and that's just my.
Douglas, should we go to your list? You were, you were aggregating a list of data.
Yeah, I don't have any more other than the ones that.
What do you have so far?
Uh, number noise complaints, tonnage of debris. Traffic counts. Total numbers of bedrooms. And that's it.
Can we, oh, sorry, can I add to it, uh, what I was, the renewals versus new? New properties for last year? If that's not hard to get.
Properties that had one last year and, and don't this year, and vice versa, properties that didn't have one last year and do have one this year.
Yeah.
Yep.
Add a couple more, I think that. If you have it, Douglas, for planning, what permits are in queue? Under, what's underway as far as permits or construction projects that are in queue that are not finished, because those are all. They're gonna, they're gonna fall into bedrooms of one category or another.
So.
A bit of construction on the island right now, it appears.
So we have, we have about, we have kind of two or three different pots of properties. We have those that are under construction, the permit's been issued. But they don't have a CO. Uh, that's one group. We have those that are, I've got. Not 40, but maybe 20 sets of plans on my desk to be, they're in the queues, some. So just those. Two buckets and their number of bedrooms.
That would be helpful, I think that would be helpful. That'll give us, that'll start giving us a little bit of forward look on what's coming down the pipeline.
I will.
It'll be a first step to a little bit of forecasting.
I, I will just put out there, and it, and it wasn't the 2019 review, it was another one of the reviews where similar concerns were brought up. And, and the group at that time looked at. Houses completed. In the last five years and rental licenses associated with new construction, and I do remember that was a dramatic downturn. For whatever reason. You know, each year less and less rentals were being built, but to me that was, that was. Useful to have, we could certainly do that, kind of a, a look back at. Things completed over the last several years and what they're. How many of those actually converted to rentals and how many were lived in?
So you said two permits under, in your underway right now that have not been.
Construction projects, right?
Plus plans on desk, or how many roughly?
Maybe 20?
20 plans on desk, but how many permits?
20, oh, how many are under construction?
Yeah.
Uh, that's probably 50?
So we got 70 in the queue.
70 in various, yeah, stages of.
And it would be interesting to your point to know the trend on the new properties coming out. How many are being licensed?
Yeah, and, and to that point, I don't know until after they're finished. What they're gonna do.
Well. We do have, you do have better counsel on this.
Yes.
How long does that permitting process take?
Uh, it's very quick. Ron, be quiet. Now.
If you have your ducks in a row.
It, it usually takes four to six weeks once it comes to me.
And one other thing on the list I think that would be helpful, we may have to figure out how to get it, would be advertised. Occupancy. Versus what your authorized occupancy is.
And I don't know a way of getting them. We'll look at it, I don't know.
Well, we, hopefully we're gonna be able to help gather data, we're not putting, hopefully we're not putting this all on you.
I still don't know how to, I don't, I don't even know how you would get to it.
It's just a thing a lot of, somebody actually.
None of the, none of the rental sites have addresses. Well, I say none, most of them don't.
Most, all the ones on our, the one that we just looked on our, around our blog, they all, they were very easy to find.
You were, you were probably looking at, you probably know them and you were looking at dots on a map.
No, I plug in an address and VRBO advertisement or the advertisement for the rental pops up.
Yes, but if you search Isle of Palms for a five-bedroom house. You're not gonna know the address necessarily.
No, but I, we've got the addresses of short-term rentals, look up the address on the short-term rental, and we can see the advertised board, it shows our advertised occupancy. It's pretty, pretty easy stuff.
It takes a whole lot of time and quite a few beer.
So Scott's volunteered to do that.
I will, I will gladly volunteer to get that.
Yeah, that's a, that's, I think that one's a tough one.
Yeah.
That one's a time, that's not kind of mashing together two sets of data.
I'll take my 300. I already got over.
I think that'd be an interesting data point.
I agree.
So that's all I've got. So we get the data and we try to analyze it for a moment, I think we can get the tools to do that. And meantime. Some conversation on what is the target? I don't know that we know that, and we can talk about that until we get the data, do you think?
Right.
Sandy, what do you?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm wide open here, I'd like to know more. I'm not in favor of a moratorium because I don't think we know anything.
No.
That's why I said it. That's why I said it the way it's a dramatic, if you do that, which is pretty dramatic, and I don't think we're at that point.
We don't.
Or we need to get data.
Was the origin of that vocabulary word from the council meeting?
Yeah, they use the word.
Yes.
I think that, I don't know for a fact, Philip just left, but. There was some information out there about 300% increase in license.
388.
Listings in, on the internet for Isle of Palms or licenses, I don't know the exact wording.
Oh, that article, yes.
There were, there are a couple of sites that if you go to them. They're, they were small to begin with, they had. 10 listings or 100, and now they have 400 or whatever, it's.
That was a clickbait, that's all that was.
The other, the other part of that is that. How redundant are those listings across the other sites? Airbnb, VRBO, booking.com, and then what other, and that, there's a lot of. It's more than duplicity, but there's a lot of listings out there for different owners and different.
The, the data that was used for this, which is the 2019 presentation, you know, that planning commission and.
Yes.
Do you have the database they use for this? Because there's some good stuff in there.
I think that, was that the key, key data?
You said an Excel.
So it was, it was right from ours, it was not. Okay.
I mean, if it's readily available, don't go crazy over it, but there was some good stuff in here.
And again.
Specifically the map?
Well, the map's in here, right, map's in here, it's good, but this obviously, this is obviously GIs presentation of all the, so there's data behind this map.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, that's off, is that in the, is that in the list?
No.
No. And it's, and it talks in fair amount detail the breakdown of the, of the different rentals, so.
That was generated from the city's list of licenses, as I mentioned earlier, and it was the 2018 licenses that was. Shared. And mapped on there, and it's.
I'm just saying it would be a good, that's a 2018, 2018 data point that we even start comparing 2021 to.
Well, and I, yeah, I would challenge that 2019 changed also, it went, went down from the 18 in 2020 and now 2021 has gone down too.
Just curious roughly, like, so the licenses just expired in June?
Yes.
How many were, how many new licenses got issued, say in the last, the three, last three months of that?
Very slow. It, yeah, it, they, the vast majority of them renew. End of August. So we have kind of 80% of them at the end of August, then the last 20% trickle in through the year. We have kind of another surge in the spring, but by the end. That, you know, it's one or two a week kind of thing, but right now it's hundreds.
Yeah, no, this was meant more, if you looked at that time period, I would. Think most of those would be new ones. Of somebody just changing, converting the house or, you know.
It could be, yeah.
A majority of those that were done in the last three months weren't somebody that just decided, I'm gonna leave and rip my house out.
Oh, those last few months?
Yeah.
Well, we are, they, they are notoriously that we're chasing, I think most of them, we are kind of chasing to the end.
Well, your new software helps you, does it not?
Yeah, it does.
Comparative reasons.
Yes. Yeah, and we can see on that software how long they've been renting it, even though that, so. My sense that that, yeah, that. It wouldn't really be just new constr. So what about the, so the idea that. Investors are buying, buying these and. Putting them into rental. I was shocked, so the county data that we just had had 700 sales in the last. Year, and I, I did, I did pull them out, I looked at them a little bit, there was a lot of duplicates in there, and I don't know why. Worked out to be that way, so there was some amount less than that, but. Would that be useful to know how, what, you know, kind of what in the last. In the last year, those that have been bought in the last year, last 18 months. Are they getting licenses at a significantly higher clip? I mean, to me, I guess that would be. An indicator of the issue that you were describing, Scott, where people are buying them to, to convert. That, I guess, in my mind, that was kind of a. That triggered the notion of what could we do, and, and it, and it did bring to mind. The tax code with, you know, what, how long you have to have owned a property to be able to. Sell it and take advantage of it being your primary residence and not having to pay the same. Uh, taxes as, as an investment property. And I guess it got my mind into a, into a place of. Maybe it could. Maybe we could pivot something off of how long you've owned it. You know, I, I, I do hear a lot of folks say, well, it's, it's my home, if I want to rent it, I should be entitled to rent it. I do object to, you know, people or corporations showing up. Wholesale buying a bunch and putting them into the rental program, so I guess that. Idea puts something in my mind about why don't we look at if, first of all, if it's happening, and, and if it is happening. A mechanism to just, you know, and I don't know if you can slow it or what you can do, but you have to have owned it for X number of years before you can. Before you can rent it, something like that.
Even with the data set we have now, you should, we can sort when a property was purchased and when you first issued the license, we'd be able to see.
Yes.
So we, the data we have was sorted and can tell us that, and then we can look at the, the owner, if it's a corporation, is it a person?
That's right.
So I think the.
Would that be a, in the list of, in the list of data points to get, do we wanna?
But I think we have it, we just need to sort by it. I think it's in the data sheets we have already. I don't think it's new data, it just, it's, it's, we just have to sort it out of there. Because we have the, you have the.
Oh, I don't think you have sale date.
Um, the property.
The property listing did.
Yeah, property has, real estate listing has. Yeah.
But did it have the rental?
Has the data sale, no, we need to merge that.
Yeah, needs to be put together.
But we have the raw data, we just need to merge a few more together. We have the data sale, we have the license, they're just not on the same sheet yet.
That be useful?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just a quick update, I did do a MLS search. Isle of Palms since January 1st, and I will share with you, tell me what you want. Since January 1, Isle of Palms outside of Wild Dunes had 66 transactions, that's through MLS, and I think you'll find that's. Very little variation from what the tax office, the auditor's office will.
Tax? That data set had 700, I don't know why that, 700 in a year.
Yeah.
And so you're describing half a year, six, so I was hoping it was something more like.
So that's outside. The gates.
Oh, outside.
If you will, and inside the gates was 102. Of the 66. 34 were four bedrooms or less, so. Just not, you know, 150/50, but close enough to call it that. Of the 102 at Wild Dunes. 84 were four bedrooms or less. We can get more detail if you want. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
But we'd only be guessing why. You know, would, would that under a four-bedroom house be torn down to build a, a new six-bedroom house?
Certainly somehow. How many of them moved into?
He's Douglas, this would be a real potential heavy lift now that Sandy and Ron opened up the door there. The 70 that you've got in the queue. Would it be possible to find out what was there before? In other words, can we, this, and maybe we just do a test, no, we don't, we don't have to be full 70, but it's one of those where. Did they buy, did somebody buy a three-bedroom and are now putting up a seven or anything?
Yeah, you, you could do the county GIS and.
Well, he, he's got the, oh, you mean on what was, yeah, well, actually, those addresses might.
Yeah, you'd have to do it. Yeah, it would be.
Good, good point. When, when was that last data set you sent? As of?
The counties?
Yes, was that as of basically that week?
Yes, but it was, it was, yeah, it was capturing, you know, their, their values are years, is a year and arrears. Yes, but it was, it was, yeah, it was capturing, you know, their, their values are years, is a year and arrears. So we captured it last month, but it, well, last week, I guess, but some of the, a lot of the numbers are on, in there are for the prior year. I think.
Yeah, and I think that would be fairly reflective of what still is, with the exceptions of what we're talking about, the seventy that may have been. They have, they may be demolished and rebuilt. Is it possible to get, to Scott's point, the addresses of those seventy in queue? Is that public confirmation?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think I have that on, I do have that on the list. I just don't feel like they're that.
Eight vacant lots have sold.
Yeah, I just don't feel, I feel like they're all tear downs.
Or they could be remodeled.
Yeah, we lived in a community where that went on for, it's probably still going on for decades, where they, they were nineteen fifties homes. This is in the Dallas area, and, you know, it was just common practice, you're selling, you're selling a lot for dirt value, and everybody's just coming in there plowing up their old two and three bedroom home and putting up four and five and six and seven.
Right.
Well, you have an additional anomaly with a lot of these brick veneers that went through Hugo, and they're showing a great deal of deterioration from the saltwater intrusion.
So.
Do you need more?
I don't know.
So then there's just, you know, market trends, you know, maybe several years ago when the market wasn't so hot, there's different motivation for renovating and, you know, I, I was approached by somebody who looking to spend two point nine million dollars, second row Ocean Boulevard to tear a house down and build a new three million dollar house, and I'm saying to myself, six million dollars for a second row? Uh, you know, the house across the street that a buddy of mine owned, he was happy to get four point two, I think, or four point one. It's like, where's the sense in that? So right now, there's a lot of stupid stuff going on, and I just don't, I just don't know how long that's really gonna go on.
California prices.
Yeah, well, and that's what they said ten years ago, or however long ago the last big boom was, and they were really testing markets, but, you know, that, that's just another thing, you know, if the market starts to slow, you know, will people be as quick to tear things down, or would they be more prone to renovate? I've certainly, myself, have been enjoying doing more renovations of late than new construction. A lot of new construction is speculative. And, you know, that's, it's not fun work. And a lot of the renovations have been for folks that are looking to stay there, or as a second home not to rent. Or perhaps will rent, I don't know. Then they, then they build it, they finish it, they move in, I don't want to rent this. Yeah.
Well, and that brings up a good question. It's, it's not a big number, but how many of the vacation rentals convert to residence? And it's basically a holding on point, a stopping point. I need to buy into the market now before it gets away from me, and I'll be retiring in two, three, five years. I mean, there's, I see that a lot, not across the board, but I mean, that's another.
So I have a bunch of homework. I, I would like to ask, and I have always felt like it was useful as we kind of get together information, data points to, for the group, to kind of throw ideas out and have collectively kind of poke holes in it, see which, which of those ideas hold water, which don't, which can be dismissed. So I would like to ask each of you to just give some thought to if we were to do something, and, and I, and I, the city has it's never a simple thing, for whatever reason. If we're gonna deal with lot coverage, it's like, if you're septic, you're this much, and you reduce it, but so I would expect, kind of knowing the way things go, that if we were to come up with a cap, it won't just be sixteen hundred units, period, or whatever the number is, because I think there's a lot of, there are too many variables in there to kind of to work around. So as, as we're doing this project, if you would, if you think of an idea that you would like to kind of have tested by the group, send it to me. I would like to create a list of those. We talk about them, we, we kind of, like I say, punch holes in them, see which ones bear out to be potentially useful. And then I think at the end of the day, the group will have information, you'll have an id, you'll have kind of a list of ideas to, to consider, and then ultimately from that, a recommendation will come out, hopefully. Or I, I also will say that the planning commission, and a number of times, has gone through that process. You create the framework, and then at the end, this was the same thing with sewer, sewer-ing the entire island. A lot of work was spent analyzing it and a, and an entire kind of book of information, ultimately to say, hey, we did a lot of work, but at the end of the day, this is the recommendation. So while it may seem like it was a lot of work to, to come to a small recommendation, I think it's always useful, it's beneficial, it's something that we continuously go back and look at. It will also help, you know, you all will look at it, and then, and then ultimately, obviously, goes to the planning commission, I mean, to the city council. And those members, I think, will find all of the work useful. So that would be my task of you all, that you just, as you think of things, send it to me, and we'll redistribute it.
Can I have one thing, just to caution you guys, when you do things like that, don't answer each other.
Yeah, just send it to me.
Very careful about that. You can send them, you can't even send them collectively. Just don't answer each other. I was nervous yesterday when y'all received that one email, but do some data. Don't, don't go back and forth with anybody, just for your own protection.
Is it a thing to have a work session on both of those points? I mean, I don't know, is that something that's ever been done before? I know that we have a lot of meetings and things.
Yes.
Likes them, but it would, feels like there's, I can't even keep track of all the.
Yeah, I, I would just say that the number of things that we've talked about pulling together is, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be in the next few days. So I do think there will be, I guess, I am envisioning taking time to pull together all we can, and then I think things will start to kind of move a little bit quicker than, but I think in this initial steps, it's gonna be a lot of work to pull together the information, so.
Do we need to do that all at one place and bring our computers and crunch data, or is that, is it silly? Is it just independent research and assignments?
I think it would be good to have it, maybe, it doesn't have to be a long meeting, should we get together, can we do anything virtually anymore?
No.
It's either a bar, or is it an ordinance?
That is a, yeah, that's the city code.
As the governor dropped his, he dropped his emergency action, so the city paralleled.
Well.
But is, is it a city ordinance?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do other cities meet virtually for things like what we're doing?
Yeah, but work sessions, usually, when they're, if you do a work session, it's supposed to be, they're generally a lot more casual.
Yeah.
It's a roundtable thing, you're just.
We just have to, we have to give notice of it, but.
I mean, I think it couldn't hurt, where, where I was going is it couldn't hurt maybe to have a checkpoint. Some of this data.
Yeah.
Got a lot of.
Yeah, a lot of these things.
Maybe there, there are things that we can start doing with it.
Yeah, some will be quick, some will be, I think some will be impossible, and then there'll be kind of those in between. So I think we'll know.
What's the impossible? I, I want to hear it.
No.
Yeah, I think it's the, yeah, it's the, it's the advertise occupancy versus.
Drawing the gauntlet.
It's drawing that line.
Okay.
Well, it's not impossible. I, I guess I should quantify, anything's possible if you have enough time to dedicate time and money. Um, I think that's a good idea, pretty agreeable to special meeting in about two weeks, and we can circulate a date, or you can pull out your calendar, if, if that's.
I can do the twenty eighth, I can do the twenty ninth, early for that week, up through twenty eighth.
I can do earlier in that week. I can do twenty sixth or seventh. I can do twenty six. I don't know if that's.
That's Monday, I'll be added to.
Oh.
Maybe it's just a quick checkpoint, maybe we don't.
Yeah, I don't think I'm gonna have.
Two hours.
I don't think we're gonna have a tremendous amount of, I mean, that's kind of.
And if it's sort of, if it's sort of couched as a workshop.
Yeah, that's kind of.
Yeah.
Seven workdays. So it'll be a tremendous amount, but we'll know, we'll kind of know where we are.
What are we talking?
Twenty six. Or twenty seven. When, when are you available?
Uh, afternoon of the twenty eighth, then beyond.
And beyond?
Right.
So how about first week in August? And then we kind of start to quickly get into.
Right, so we could, it's possible.
Monday, August second?
Well, the second, we already got recreational property.
What time are they?
I'm on the twenty sixth to the sixteenth.
Well, if we're talking the first week in August, so then personnel is going to be on the third right now.
But wait, you will be here. Go back to that second.
Right, for eight AM and one thirty PM.
You, you want us to plug your skies right there in the middle? See, just stay through.
I'll go pick you up, Chick-fil-A.
Can, I, I need to ask you to do this. Would it be possible just pulling in that following Friday? So I'm, I'm out the twenty sixth to the fourth.
Uh, we're talking, right now, talking August second.
Oh, you're in August.
Monday, August second.
Can I do that?
I, I won't be back till the sixteenth.
Oh, sixteenth of August.
Oh.
I apologize.
So you'll miss our regular.
Well, will you have, that's on Monday. Are you having it the seventeenth, or are you having it the tenth?
Regular be the.
Tuesday to twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh of July is a Tuesday, which is right before.
That was okay with everyone else?
I won't be here, but that's, that's fine.
You don't want me here.
That does not work for either of you? It doesn't work for you either?
No, I, if, if we move into that, I'll do the twenty seventh. I can rejuggle one last thing. The twenty seventh would be okay.
Twenty seventh, let's do twenty.
If we did it like four thirty, then you would have one hour until city council.
That, that would work. Okay. I can do that.
Should we do three thirty?
Uh, the twenty seventh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that be recorded?
Yeah. Yeah. What time were you saying? So I have a, kind of an all day audit from ten until there's no, and then public hearing, five forty five.
Then one hour, four fifteen to five.
I think it's just a touch, yeah, one hour is, I think it's fine.
Yeah.
Four fifteen, so, Douglas reminded me, we have a public hearing ahead of city council, just remember my calendar. Um, so like four fifteen to five fifteen on July twenty seventh, Tuesday, July twenty seventh.
Ron, you cannot be here.
Yeah, I'll be at it, yeah.
Okay, I can, yeah, that's fine. The twenty seventh, four fifteen to five fifteen.
Good.
That's a, that's good.
Yeah.
All right.
Is it possible, I hate to ask, would it be possible to move the regular meeting a week or?
Because you're gonna miss that. August eleventh, you'll, you'll miss. Let me.
I get, I get, I'm, we're getting back to six. Yeah.
Flexible, I'm not that far out, that's, that's fine, Shu.
What's the work doing all this?
Right, I'm just saying.
Oh. Yes, missed that mark. Yeah.
Are we, I don't, let's find out, because I mean.
All right, while everybody has their calendar out, do we want to? Anybody have conflicts with moving back the regular August from the eleven to the eighteen?
Who knows? Yeah, that's fine. That's okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
The eleventh to the eighteen?
Wednesday.
On the eighteenth of August?
Yeah.
Oh, that would be great.
One to four.
From one to four, and they do their regular meeting at four forty.
Four thirty. So you can just, you can just stay right here.
That.
Is that good? Everybody okay with that? So let's agree to move the regular meeting to the eighteenth at four thirty. And I'll, I'll send out invites for all of you. Okay, good. All right, we ready for item two?
Can I ask one procedural question first? Without violating any, any rules, can the three of us talk about how to merge the Excel data sheets?
Yes.
The four of you mind, we're gonna play with the Excel sheets?
Oh.
Okay, so the three of us may have a couple emails back and forth. We'll keep you copied and everything, we'll let you know.
No, don't do that.
Right, okay.
And if we have a question.
It'll go to the group.
Can we?
I'll send it to the group.
Okay, we come to you, and then you.
All we're gonna do is just merge some Excel data sheets.
We can't, we can't have dialogue with.
So if there is a question that the group needs to weigh in, we need to have a meeting.
Okay, okay. We'll avoid that, so we're just gonna.
We won't talk to each other.
Three of us. Okay. Got it.
All right, thank you.
No decisions have been made.
No, I understand, we're trying to follow the rules.
Are we good to move on?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So, and, and this may be, so the next thing is the discussion of the housing data from the assessment.
Oh.
If you recall, the original purpose of that was the housing element of the conference plan. We've just kind of gotten it, and we're gonna let those three work on. That's agreeable to them. We're obviously gonna find it useful for other parts of our work, but I don't think we have a lot to discuss about it, other than we may have it. But they've been, they were super quick the first time. We asked for data, each time it gets.
A little slower.
A little resistance.
A little resistance, I'm right.
We won't push it again.
We have, they've been actually fantastic.
I quickly looked through the last set that you sent out, it looks like what we asked for, they are, we can play with it. So I think we made good progress.
All right. So now we can do a better, I don't want me to do it really quickly. Ready to go on? So the next one, this is the, consider making a recommendation on the drainage master plan R and P. You will, for, for, we, all interview numbers to interview three, I think we received five interview three, chose Davis and Floyd as the most qualified responder. They have sent a proposal, and in your packet, there was a, there was an email that kind of detailed out your own task schedule, and then attached to the email was a, was pricing for each of their tasks. You kind of had to look at their email to assign their task to our scope of work. Uh, the total for their work was two forty eight, two hundred and forty eight thousand. Of that, eighty seven hundred dollars was not in our, it's work that they feel like we could use, that was outside of our scope, that's.
Rainfall and water level.
Yeah, so the last one, eighty seven hundred, past zero point one. So, two things. First of all, we had talked about potentially setting a break, so not, uh, well, I guess first, first would be, if it looked reasonable, if it's what you all expected. Secondly, I guess, is a, is a follow on to that question, if so, is there a break point that you want to recommend to council that we do tasks? Experimex. Um, so, that's it.
I hate.
Right.
I hate that they, in this public information, that they kind of hit the, hit the number.
At least I didn't put two hundred and fifty thousand exactly.
Well, yeah. Yeah, I don't know. It's, uh.
Yeah. Yeah.
I get it.
So, historically, you know, the, uh, if the pricing seems off-kilter to the group, I mean, there is an opportunity to go back to the other respondents, to the next most qualified. I think I remember from the grading, the next two were always exactly neck and neck in terms of your score. And I, you know, to Sandy's point, I think, I think that they do basically tailor their I, from my, from my vantage point, they look, that, these respondents look at the, uh, budget, they, nobody alerted them to do that, but I think they kind of all know to do that, and look at the budget. And then I think they tailor their response to the request and to the budget, so I think that that is pretty much an intentional thing, that they know if they came back with twenty-five thousand, we would all scratch our heads and say, well, we, we had anticipated a lot more work than that. So I think it's just a, I think it's a, kind of how they how they, uh, do work. When it's a, when it is a study, it seems to work out that way, if it's a hard and fast project, you know, we need you to install this many linear feet of pipe, that is very much tailored to you know, the cost of the project, but I do think that they tailored their response to the budget, uh, and I think that's fairly common for these type of responses.
My, my first reaction was, I, I don't think I had a lot of heartburn over the total amount. Um, I would like to have seen more detail on how they built up their tasks, especially if they're gonna be building, billing on a T and M basis. The, the only one line item I, I saw that kind of raised my eyebrow was the two-one, where they're for fifty-seven thousand dollars to review the existing projects that others are already done and designed, and I don't think we were necessarily looking for that level of effort, I'm not, I'm not asking, when you tell an engineer to review someone else's work, that's a specific, that they're gonna, they're gonna pull out their sheets, you're gonna pull out their calculations, that's not what we're looking for, I don't think so. We were looking that those, they recognize that those other projects are going on, being conducted by others, and they need to coordinate those into their plan. But I'm not looking for an engineering review of other engineers' work. So that fifty-seven thousand seemed a little high to me.
I think that's the development of the, of the new capital improvement plan as well.
As well, I mean, there's other stuff in there, I agree.
I see it as future looking for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is this, uh, you all probably know better than I do, but this appeared to be based on the, uh, presentations, uh, labor-intensive, not material-intensive.
Oh, yeah.
And it also, um, you know, depending upon what kind of an hourly rate you use, you know, if they were a hundred bucks, we're looking at twenty-five hundred hours of total time here now. So is, is this really a twenty, they, it came out to me with all three presentations, that they're gonna rely on a lot of data they already have. And that they're gonna rely on a lot of the automated processes, tools that they spoke very highly of during their presentations. So, would it be out of bounds to really go back to them, you know, twenty-five hundred hours, that's a, two, you know, that's over a man person's, um, year, a year plus in time? Um, you know, what the duration of these tasks are, what the labor loads are, I think a cost breakdown, I, I'm accustomed to seeing a cost breakdown, this is not a cost breakdown. This is a regurgitation of the RFP points with a price, one-line item price. So we have no visibility into what they are, and I'm, I'm kind of with Sandy, I thought it was a little coincidental that they came out of the line item. And I wouldn't know if you're, when you were doing the budget, how you, you know, probably just had a placeholder out there with the two fifty, so I'm not accustomed to that either. Um, alternatively, um, I'd put all three back in the hunch. We can do either one, but.
Yeah, I would, to your point, I would like to have seen task one point one, um, a time allocation to it, I see the money, I get, I get the, I get, and I would have thought that perhaps, you know, how much, how many hours, how many hours for task one point two, one point three, et cetera, to your point, I.
Is the last time a three-week, is that a three-week effort or a four-month effort? I, we have no, we have no visibility.
Hey Douglas, remind me, what were the, um, submitted milestones that we had in the, um, well, what's the client engagement piece, how many reviews submitted and, um, things like that, or is it per, per task, or is it every?
We asked them to do it for that, we asked them to break their pricing down for that.
Oh, no, I mean, when they're actually performing the work, at what point do we get to engage, or does the city get to engage and evaluate where they're at?
Probably.
What kind of progress submitted do we have in there?
The RQ doesn't.
Didn't address that at all?
Okay.
You know, we, uh, we typically just administratively do it by reviewing their billing, and their billing against their billing breaks down hours, uh, and percentage.
And then you just get one final product.
No, we're, we're doing monthly billing. And then each task has its own.
Oh, um, okay.
Understanding the question.
There's a deliverable associated with each task, that, that the cities are get engaged with, is what you're saying. So there's a point, there are several points to evaluate progress and how they're performing.
Yes.
So I think it would be reasonable.
I think in their billing, I mean, I, yeah, I'm not sure that I'm fully following, but their billing, I would expect, I've never done work with, uh, Davis and Floyd, but typically has each task item a percentage of week, number of hours spent, uh, cost per hour. Some kind of breakdown.
Do they have duration of the task?
Duration timeline?
Yeah.
When they submit.
Not on the billing, I'm sorry, yeah.
Not on the billing, but we have a, we have more of a timing deliverable.
I would have thought, I would have thought these would have.
I think that's what they're, they're asking for, that's why I'm asking the question, so we got the billing schedule. Yeah, so is there?
This is from August to.
Right.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking at it more from task one point one, it's gonna take us six weeks, duration, we're gonna have four people on it for, you know, duration average, and it's gonna be the hourly billing rate.
Complete it, submit it, the city evaluates the progress based on.
So a general schedule, like a Gantt chart, the schedule.
Yeah.
So I think I'm hearing two different things, a time allocation in terms of billable time? Or are you saying duration of that task?
I'm just saying, yeah, again, this is proposals that I, I don't know, we'll, I think Steve said both. Yeah.
We, we, we wanna see, we wanna see the manpower breakdown and the schedule.
But to your point, Douglas, the, the, what do you call the chart?
I call it Gantt.
Gantt chart. Right.
I think would give us a much more comfortable, I would make, for, by this time, we'll have this, and then it'll be overlapping, we're also working on that.
Right.
Don't know that I care much about how many people are working, I don't want to micromanage that, but, um, just more, what, what's being devoted to what here that makes up twenty thousand dollars for one point one?
So do you all want to, I, I think you have a few choices here. Request disinformation, uh, delay recommendations, so you have it back, which probably is gonna be, uh, you won't have a chance, I don't think, to look at it before your next, your August meeting.
Could we look at a checkpoint, could we put it on the agenda, the quick hour checkpoint? Or nevermind, maybe not.
That'll be, I think that'll still be after.
That's gonna be after, wait.
Yeah, so I.
No, no, bad idea, Paul, I, that, that's not a good idea.
Yeah, we're down to an hour.
It's a bad idea.
So I think our, so basically, I think our choices are, go back, ask for more information, it has the effect of delaying start a month, which I don't see as a major problem.
I don't see that as a problem, I guess my next question is, do we want to get another bit, do we wanna, somebody said it before, let's push it out, out all three.
Yeah, that, I guess that was the follow-up.
Yeah, I kind of suggest as an alternative, but it could be, you know, given where we are, is there any harm, is there downside to sending out all three?
And I'm not a, not a German expert, I do think that we're supposed to kind of exhaust.
I'm supposed to pull the plug on these guys before you move to somebody else.
Or ask them to do is break down their, their estimate.
Yeah, I mean, he's worth a selected winner, I think we just ask him for more detail.
Right.
If then we don't like what you see, then we can move on.
Right.
Right? That's how I would.
Cause he wouldn't be paying from this.
Exactly, right.
Right. They're not gonna, at the end of, you know, month one, say, we're eighty percent complete of one point one, give us sixteen thousand dollars.
Right.
Like, well, you know, why? So, you know, i- it's kind of like, when I do billing in construction, you, you have subcategories, and, and everything is itemized from there on down, in a, you know, so yes, you, you can combine all, all the data into six figures, or six line items, but every one of those line, every one of those items is further broken down. People just wanted to be able to see, you know, the task to, um, to the dollar so that you can, you know, better assess, there's a lot going on in one point one, you know, for that twenty point three, just
Yes, three different.
Three different tasks, you know, or four, just, you know, just, just give us dollar value, each one of those, you'd feel still better, you know?
All right, we're gonna do, I'll, I'll ask, uh, schedule and manpower kind of breakdown to build this out, and we're here, we'll, when we get it, we'll put it on whatever the next agenda is, and we'll just the expectation, we're doing that, knowing that we're delaying the start by a month, but I don't think there's, I don't think it's one.
So it'll be two months.
Unless we have a special. So we got one. Yeah. All right.
It's possible.
So delaying it too much, but I don't, I don't, at any point, you're not ready to make a recommendation.
Right.
No.
Even if we went to somebody else, it's still gonna be delayed two months.
Yeah.
And what is the timing for their completion of all these tasks?
Uh, we don't have.
That's, that's the schedule we need.
And then, and then what's next? Going to the, the delays, it delays, what's going to be the outcome of it, or is that can't answer that till we have an analysis of the outcome of it?
Give you my two cents.
Twenty-five billion or twenty-six?
All of this work boils down to very expensive other work, that we don't have money to do in our budget currently. So, in my mind, that's a huge hurdle of finding the money.
We don't need to hurry it up.
Yeah, funding is gonna be the issue anyway.
Right, at the end of the day, it's gonna boil down to a very expensive list and task group that
Right.
two months is not enough.
I don't know if this relates Douglas, but, and we talked about this, I think at the last meeting, with the bucks coming out of DC, and I mean, I guess a couple millions coming this way already, and with infrastructure underway, is there a proactive? I mean, this is a shovel-ready project that, once it gets approved to do, to do drainage, I mean, isn't it?
This, you said?
Yeah.
The study.
This is not really.
No, no, not the study, I'm talking about the, you know, once we get into, if we're gonna do a phase four, or even some of the stuff we've got underway that might even qualify, cause it hasn't kicked off yet, I mean, is there, is there a move afoot, or is there, is somebody proactively in the city getting their applications in for this money that's coming down the pipeline? There's, there's a lot of money being tossed around.
Um, that.
And we, and I, I would think.
Priority investment.
Yeah.
There's something before that.
Yeah, that's it, I mean, it's all kind of coming to an end.
Yeah. I think the sewer commission's going after some of that, uh, pretty proactively.
We're talking, yeah.
I mentioned it to one of the commissioners after our meeting a couple months ago, he's like, what? You know what? We have it.
I think they're going, I think they're going pretty strong, after some, some money on the application, I guess, maybe there's some help over there that might help us over here. Britain House, Conspire. Bad idea.
No, I think, they don't have any, they were meeting with it, they don't have any money coming to them.
No, but I think they're, they're drawing the application, they're go, they're going for the request right now, they're in the process, from what I understand. They might be in the process of actually getting some formal requests, and they've got some expertise and experience over there that speaks government, grant, talk. That maybe we don't have in the city right now.
Well, we qualify for some, we just haven't gotten it. Like the first batch of American rest of plan, we just haven't gotten our first.
Is that, is that, is that something that the city applied for, that it, it's automatic, yeah, no, I'm saying, I'm going, I'm talking about application, going.
So they're gonna award it.
Which is part of.
Big one.
Right, they're.
Part of this was.
Yeah.
So look at that.
We, we may not, we may have an opportunity.
To the city.
Correct, yes, Council of the Towns said that the city is supposed to get about two point million from American rest of plan. The state has it, I believe, but the state has not dispersed it yet to the municipal.
Yeah, two billion.
And then city council, I think, already has eyeball on that for infrastructure anyhow, because it has to be spent very specifically, and in a certain period of time, like two years. On it, sure.
And all I'm, all I'm saying is, there might be a lot more money that might be eligible to try to sign an application. But this, though, that, those might be bucks we have to go after, supposed to have them.
We'll take them out of Marty's kid.
Anyway.
My grant.
All right, I think we're clear on, uh, drainage master plan RFP, we'll get more information, put that on our. Leads us to the next item. Uh, recommendation on extending outdoor sales exemption, so this one is coming from.
Ordinance twenty twenty-one, understand?
Yeah, this is coming from, I think to the public safety, it's coming from one of the subcommittees of city council. And the, the idea here is that there was, uh, an exemption, a temporary exemption given for restaurants to be able to serve, uh, patrons outdoors, outdoors during the pandemic. Um, that exemption was very kind of well-received and appreciated by the, uh, business community, and I think also uh, enjoyed by the residents and the visitors to the island, so um, and I think this effort is following suit from a city of Charleston, city of Charleston did the same thing whereby they extended that provision uh, for a year at the city. And so this allows that, in our code, businesses have to go through the special exception process with the board of zoning appeals to be able to do, uh, outdoor sales, there's a number that have gone through that uh, process and been approved by the board of zoning appeals, the ones that you know of that are already doing it, through that process. Uh, this gives, this exempts them from needing to do that for a specified period of time. To give them flexibility, uh, it was originally given to them for the pandemic, that, that this would extend that, so uh, it's coming from city council. It's coming really to you all because it's part of the zoning code, the zone, and the planning commission uh, has kind of purview of recommendations to any change in the zoning code. At the last maybe it was real, it's actually real property.
Yeah. An, an end date on it.
Yeah, so, so it must have originated with real property. They, um, opted to go with an eighteen-month extension with the, uh, with the knowledge that a one-year exemption would end in the middle of their busy season. So they extended it to, and it wasn't exactly.
Jan, January fifteenth or the thirtieth is what I remember. Thirty-first. So that
Twenty twenty-three.
Restaurants wouldn't be caught in the middle of.
Correct. So they've kind of developed the timing for when it would expire, basically in the slow season, just before another council meeting, so in case they wanted to uh, consider, or just after a council meeting, so they will have had a chance to consider extending it again if they so choose. So, it's before you all for a recommendation, um, if we will to recommend however you like, but that's the backstory to it.
What's the risk here, I mean, what, what was it created in the first place, and what are we at risk of diminishing if we extend it, and then turns into a long-term scenario, I mean, is there, what was the purpose?
Well, it, it is short-circuiting the board of zoning appeals process, which, which I personally feel like having seen cases go through, uh, the board of zoning appeals, in my opinion, does a very good job at tailoring each request to its environment, to its size, to its neighbors, you know, they're, they're very focused on, uh, noise generated, where this is kind of short, short-circuiting that process a little bit. Having said that, I don't think that there have been any real downsides, so it's, so this exemption has been in place for, uh, over a year now. And I don't think it's created any problems. So, if there were potential for problems, what I thought would come up, uh, my, in my personal opinion, that potential for, from problems would have come. That potential for, from problems would have come from short-circuiting the border zoning appeals regular process.
Should, should we ask Boza to look at this, instead of before we look at, I mean, so?
Well, um, so it's really before you as a technicality. Um, so I think that it would be, you all could make a recommendation, uh, but it is, it is already on their agenda for.
So it will go to, Boza will have an ultimate sort of say or something?
No. No, they, as it, as it stands, they would, unless council wants to.
Not because of what we're doing, because of what council's doing.
Right.
Okay.
That, this seems very geographically restricted, how many businesses is really even applied to, not many?
So, so I think, I think initially there was four or five that were taking advantage of it, I think it's now scaled back to really two, maybe three.
It's like Pappy's and picnic tables and stuff like that?
Yep.
Yeah.
They're not allowed to be on, they're not allowed to be on the right away and they have to be. They can't be more than two hundred feet from the right away or a hundred and sixty feet from the ocean, and you have to be a licensed restaurant to start with, so I mean, the field gets pretty small pretty fast.
Yes, it's not, it's not a huge number, those that still had the ability to do it, and were doing it kind of in their parking lot. So once the restrictions lifted, they, it wasn't advantageous to them to do it, so they stopped doing it before they even needed to stop.
Okay.
Basically the refuge, Long Island, then the, uh, um, raw bar.
Right.
Is Acme doing anything?
I think.
They were.
Oh, the, yeah.
Acme, I think, were.
Yeah.
They, they.
Where you go to, you go to pick up your, your takeout order, there are these people sitting, you tend to, they're in the parking lot.
Well, for the sake of discussion, I would, uh, make a motion that we accept the recommendation, I believe it is, from real property. Uh, and to fill in the expiration date for January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Three.
Great.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
I'll start.
I think it's a good thing, in the off-season, it's gonna be.
Any further discussion? Let's take it to a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As unanimous.
Last one, I don't know how much, uh, gas is left in everybody's tanks, because this is the priority investment element. Uh, we talked about this.
I'm ordering pizza now, so.
We talked about this in our last meeting.
Almost.
And I will tell you, just as kind of a general, and it's, and it's still very rough, still needs work. And before I put a lot more effort into it, I just kind of wanted to bounce the concept off of you all for, for feedback. But the way I took that you would like to see it kind of formulated from our last meeting was that we would really kind of overview. Uh, the current process for creating a budget grant, creating a, uh, ten-year capital improvement plan, discuss that a little bit. Then have a section dedicated that describes funding that would be available to these various projects that are identified. Uh, so, and, and there's still, there's a lot of, uh, funding sources here that are identified and dot, dot, dot to be filled in. Beach preservation, sea funds, various things. So still information to add there, but, but it's intended to be a list of, of funds that would be available. Uh, traditional funding sources, and then pivoting into, uh, grant and kind of less traditional funding sources that might be available. So there's a list of those, that, that list is coming from the work that was done on expanding sewer lines, so that's really kind of a cut and paste. Uh, and it's, and it's very tailored to twenty eighteen without what would be done, so that, that'll need to be polished and probably made a little less kind of timing. Uh, centric, because it's written now, it's very much tailored to that current community. And then ultimately, uh, we, I think we had envisioned it, um, describing a fairly short list of actual projects that this group would. Say are the city's priorities, and then in that list, probably in strategies, we would tie it to a funding source. So still a work in progress, that's kind of generally the, uh, framework that we're working on. You can see from all the red lines that. We got, usually we start with the key issues and the goals and strategies, this one, I thought we try to kind of write it first and then, and then get to those. So still kind of a work in progress, but before we went too much farther, just wanted to. Kind of take a stop, get you a look at it. Give a loose thumbs up or thumbs down or comment otherwise.
Take us right on.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it described the process a little better, I think it flowed right, yeah, it needs work and filling in, but I, I like the way it flowed better.
Okay. So.
No, I like it, yeah.
More you did.
I like the direction.
I think the structure's like good, I don't, I just still want to see some traffic mitigation placeholder in there.
Yeah, the actual tasks and projects, I agree, we can debate.
Yeah, 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 no, I think the structure is good.
Two by fours with spikes.
Don't want to forget that one.
Did we?
You said you're gonna put a placeholder in there.
I get crazy, so we did kind of say that that would be one of the projects.
Yeah, traffic mitigation or transportation enhancement, something like that.
Something like that.
Transportation enhancement.
One of the buckets.
That, that's it.
Or disentheinment.
I don't want to jump the gun.
No, that's good. Anything else like that, so in my mind, the list of projects was complete, so I'm glad you, I knew it needed to be fleshed out, um. So that's good, if you, if, if I left any other projects off on this.
Yeah, I think the issue there was, uh, if I remember right, it was, it just wasn't in the city's annual budget, there was nothing there, so it was something that we'd have to put a placeholder in.
All right, that's got a lot of work still yet to go, so I'll continue.
Yeah, projects can include roads, parks, government facilities, pathways, drainage, stormwater, infrastructure improvements, or beach re-nourishment, would think of, yeah. So, yeah, traffic definitely needs to be added to that list, that. We, we address sewer, but we really don't have control over that. You mentioned, but that's not in our purview, it won't be a budgeted item through the city directly, other than through the water and sewer.
Where, yeah, I think, you know, that one might, so I think that we, if that's truly gonna get done, I think that probably take. Some funding, some level of cooperation, and that might, they take an item, uh, it might be helpful to everybody if that was in there as a priority.
It's mentioned in here, but not necessarily at the top here, you're burying power lines. My thing too.
No, it's in there, it's in the.
No, I know, yeah.
Underground power, it's to be written, but it's the last one that I've added.
Right, 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 no, I see that, yeah.
Okay.
Beach preservation, E, that's very specific to beach re-nourishment, is there any? Latitude in how that legislation was written for the, for the tax we collect?
I don't, I don't.
I mean, it's.
There may be, there may be some latitude.
And I'm thinking, you know, snow fencing after they do a re-nourishment project, is that in there?
I think that type of stuff. I, I do get the sense that we're gonna need all of it, I mean, I. I think we're, we're gonna need all of it.
I don't know, that's a, that encompasses so much.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there's some latitude, but it, pretty much all has to be towards. I think y'all worked hard on it.
I've looked at the same a couple times, and it's, traffic was paramount.
We'd entertain a moment, a movement. A movement to adjourn.
Right, so, well.
And we have.
Second discussion.
No, all in favor?
I, I.
So a blast.